So I'd like to call the City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five. It's two P M. We're in the Ocean Shores Library, five seven three Point Brown Avenue here in Ocean Shore, Washington. For a roll call, Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Mr. Lawless is here, and I'd like to introduce Judy, who will be joining us with council approval tonight. She'll join us officially for next meeting. Our newest member to the group. And I'm I'm expecting council will approve that no problem. Mute myself here. Okay. Do you have a motion to approve our agenda?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I get an approval of minutes? This is from August twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting, since the last one was canceled. I was blessed, my bride and I came back from vacation with COVID. And also then I got blessed with doubt to go with it, so we we canceled that. Can I get a a motion to approve the minutes of August twelfth meeting?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I have a quick question.
I have an answer.
Doubt is still around.
Oh, trust me, it is. And you know, the first time I got it, I went to the doctor with it because I had never experienced it. And she said, the good news is it's doubt, I can give you something for it. The bad news is, once you've had it, the chances of you getting it more often increase substantially. And I said, thank you for the first thing. I didn't want to hear the second, right? So it's it's pretty good, but the last two times I've had it were also times when I had COVID. So something there attacks that big toe, and it's always that. Big toe. I'll just leave it at that. So anyway. Yes, so we'll move on to public communication. Anybody in the house have anything, please?
Well, I noticed on your agenda, you talk about community development. I was just wondering, what is the planning commission's vision and goal?
Well.
Is it that?
Yeah, so that is a section for Marshall to bring things to us.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. He's not here at the moment. As a matter of fact, I need to get an approval.
No, you don't. He's not a member.
Okay, so I don't have to get approval for his absence. He called me and said he had a conflict today. So.
But what did you define as your community development?
That's what the city is calling the building and planning departments is the community development.
The living plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he brings, he, to answer how I can answer that, is he brings issues that he would like us to assist him with from a planning commission to then recommended to council.
So it's a different department?
It's the planning department.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he's our record, our city government representative.
The defining community.
Yes, as Nicole just did.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it?
True.
I I wanted to say that I wasn't upset by the discussion. And and I'm absolutely impressed by the acoustics in this room. I just thought I was whispering.
Oh, trust me, we hear it. Yeah.
So, yeah. I and I realize the the trapping thing is not on your agenda. Yet the revised ordinance is on the back of the agenda for today. So and then it's on the city council agenda at the base of this group. So that's why I was confused when you were discussing it, you know, ten minutes before the start of the meeting. I walked into the middle of it.
Yeah. So the question was the history behind it. You heard that? Yeah, so we had some residents come to us and show us pictures of damage that had been caused by animals at their residence. And they had taken steps to remedy that. They've gone through Department of Fish and Wildlife and had contacted a licensed trapper. The closest one I understand is in Elma. And when the trapper heard it was Ocean Shores, said, I can't help you. And we hadn't looked into it, but then, of course, when it's brought to us, we did. And what is it? Eight point two zero says trapping is prohibited whatsoever, none whatsoever. So then the question became, and which what drove the discussion for weeks, months, is if you're a citizen, how do you remedy property damage or injury caused by an animal on your property? And with none whatsoever, you you don't have a lot of recourse. So what we did over time is we put together what we're going to propose in the discussion tonight. No council action will be will will be necessary. Is we're proposing a step four step process on how a resident could go about remedying the situation if that occurs. And right now there is nothing. So from this body, we thought having four step process for a citizen to follow was a step in the right direction. Does it answer them all? No. I mean, I've heard all kinds of opinions. Everybody's got one, and that's good. But how does that help the citizen who has damage or personal injury caused by an animal on their property? And right now there isn't anything. And as in as a property owner, you know, I'll just say personally, that kind of bothers me because now what do I do? So at least there's steps. And some of the steps said are controversial. I mean, I get it. Nobody likes it, you know, nobody likes change. And not everyone's a fan of the steps. And if we put it out to four hundred people for their ideas, we'd get four hundred different ideas, and that's okay. But how does that help the citizens deal with it? And so that's where we're at. We've been kicking it around. And the first thing, well, I'll I'll go through it tonight at council. First step is to get, you know, code enforcement to come out and look. Now, I've been criticized in the in social media, through letters. Well, they're not trained. I'm not asking them to trap anything. I'm asking them to assess is there damage? And if there's damage, then the next step goes to contacting Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then they come out. I'm not asking them to trap. I'm asking them to evaluate if there's an issue. Then if there's an issue, they can contact a licensed trapper. Now, the interesting thing, when Department of Fish and Wildlife was here in this room, if he, in this case, Scott Harris, puts a trap out, he calls the public safety officer, and we kind of looked at each other like, who's that? And so I asked the chief of police, who's the public safety officer? We'll ask the mayor and the administrator first. They didn't know. Chief of Police said, well, in the ten years I've been here, it's been the chief of police is the public safety officer. Hence, why we're in today's meeting. We're going to propose an ordinance change identifying the definition of public safety officer is the chief of police or his or her representative. And then, because Department of Fish and Wildlife has to contact the public safety officer to put a trap in Ocean Shores because of the municipal code. And then the last thing is, when the trapper comes out, we've been told it's a hundred and fifty dollars, or at least that's what the citizens found that the cost was. That cost is borne directly by the citizen, not the city. And so at least there's a process. Not everybody likes it. I mean, there's people that, you know, don't like it, and that's okay. But I'm one that likes solutions. And what I'm getting so far is just, I don't like it. I'm not getting a lot of have you can this as a solution. And I'm open. We're open. So we put forth after months of discussion in this body a process. Is it perfect? Oh, nothing's perfect. But that's where we're at today.
If I could reclaim part of my three minutes, then I will say that I object to the part about the citizens having to pay. If if there's a big structural fire in town and Hoekway Fire has to come out as a mutual aid kind of thing, they're not going to charge the homeowner. So I don't think anything public safety related. The homeowner should be paying. It's it's akin to the police charging for a further investigation or something to me. And then also the addition of cats and dogs. I don't understand that. It's it's stretching the the definition of purring animals way outside of what the Washington Administrative Code says. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Just for pure knowledge, say, when you lived in the Portland area, we had a constant influx of raccoons. And so we had permission to trap them. We rent, we rented or whatever from the local authorities, the proper cage and how to do it. And but we also promised them, when we did trap it, that we would take it out to a certain area that was designated for the police. And we did, and it was, you know, not great drive, actually. And we did, I think we had collected ten of them and throw them out. I mean, they were really a nuisance in our backyard.
Yeah.
But that worked out really well, but we also honored what they told us to do.
Sure.
So.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? Yes.
What I just, she suggested, which I've known to happen, is people actually shoot the raccoons on their property, and you don't want people shooting guns.
No, because they have just, in Ocean Shores, they have just now broken the law. Because it's against the law to shoot inside the city limits. So we're trying to find a way to provide citizens a remedy to a situation without either breaking the law or, you know, whatever, in in a legal way. Yeah, so we're we're hopeful. Because, yeah, I mean, I know in my heart of hearts, people are shooting animals. I also know in my heart of hearts, people are trapping animals. But if you look at the municipal code, which drives our party here and the city, it's against the law. So let's try to, let's try to find a solution that's legal for the citizens. Anyone from afar, please?
Yes, me, Vida. Hi. Am I recognized, Mark?
You are. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to see you're feeling better.
Oh, thanks.
So I still have the same comments that I had the last time this came before the planning commission. But for the folks that weren't there at that time, let me just say that the language that's being proposed in tonight's ordinance is adding an extra layer of complexity to state law that already satisfies and provides a remedy for what is known as a private nuisance. There is a difference between a a private nuisance and a public nuisance. And I'll get into that here in one second. So my recommendation would be to leave the municipal code exactly how it is, except for just allowing the Department of Fish and Wildlife to come in and do what they do as a matter of their business, which is to trap animals. And those guys and ladies are licensed to perform that work. And by bringing the city into it, you're adding an extra layer of complexity. And more importantly, state law defines a private nuisance as a civil infraction. It's not a criminal infraction, which pertains to public nuisances. And in your ordinance, you've said that violation of eight point twenty, which I believe that's the section of the code that you're discussing here, is a Class B offense. That is a criminal offense. So I I think you're making it more complex. You're you're alienating a lot of people, and all you need to do is just allow Fish and Wildlife to come in and and do their work. So my biggest objection to this ordinance is the fact that you're criminalizing what is otherwise under state law, a civil infraction. And that actually, that that action right there is a violation of state law. So I suggest that you look at the offense more closely if you insist on passing this ordinance. If you do pass it with that criminal remedy, you're setting up the city for some liability in in that regard. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Jane, do you have anything for us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Good afternoon. And yeah, I I agree, of course, with what Vida said, and I had brought those issues up also. And something that you may not be aware of that is is been new information put out there. But when this was sent to Chief Logan for review, the comment that she put on there, our animal control officers receive initial training on how to deal with domestic animals, which is primarily how to deal with dogs. Says unless a wild animal is found by a person or domestic animal, or the officer witnesses the animals being a threat or causing property damages, the officers are not qualified to make those determinations. And it says, and more importantly, their job description does not include dealing with wild animals, only domestic animals. So once again, my concern comes back to why this is the first procedural step in the mark of the ordinance. And as far as solution, I agree with Vida. We need to keep the local out of it and let W D F W do their job, and they can make the determinations if they want to set and add any of the trapping. And the other part on that also is the eight point two zero, where it includes dogs and cats. So W, let me look at my note here. W S, W A C, W A C, which is numbered, so you can look it up, two two zero dash four zero zero dash zero two zero list what is considered a fur bearing animal. Domestic pets are not included in that. Dogs and cats not included in that. There's two reasons. Number one, they are not in the legal, they are not legally described as a fur bearing animal. But number two is because Washington State has very heavy laws for domestic pets alone, stand alone on what you can cannot do involving dogs and cats. So and adding that under the section that specifically states hunt is also concerning because you, again, against Washington State law, you hunt dogs and cats. So why that was even included in that section is 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 interesting, and it obviously needs to be removed because it is, it's not consistent with our state law, and it lacks a legal basis. And that comes back to my concern, which is always is with these ordinances that we mark up and try and change, is they have to be enforceable and defendable. So that's my comments on that. Like I said, you may not have seen the chief's comments, but those were very exact quote from her comments. But a city, a city officers are not qualified to make determination on property damage or anything involving wildlife. So that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Jane. Appreciate it. Anything else? Yeah, we're done with public communications. The next item on the list is election of new vice chair. Dan Bricker has resigned. So that opens up a vice chair position. Do we have any nominations from the floor for vice chair? Okay, then. So do we have any volunteers to be vice chair?
I'm a volunteer.
Randy? Hey, anyone else?
Somebody assigned the secretary position.
Oh, wait a minute. Any other volunteers? With no other volunteers? Do we have a vote to make Randy Johnson the vice chair? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Aye. Congratulations. Randy is our new vice chair. Still like you to take votes today, though, please. And we'll we'll deal with the secretary position next time. Okay. So old business is Planning Commission handbook that we're up to date or we're updating. Kind of paused on it because of the change in in personnel. And and where we're at on that particular spot is I did pages one through twenty-one. Dan has submitted his changes or additions. Tom Bees, when he was here, said there was no change to his, that he was born. Have you had a chance to look at your sections?
So referencing R C Ws.
And they haven't changed since twenty-two.
My, but it didn't happen with reference any changes.
Okay, all right. Dennis?
Mine are good.
Yours are good. And then have you had a chance, Randy, to look at yours?
Yes, and I just found some additional.
Okay.
State information that I just want to cross reference fully in and add in.
Perfect.
New stuff.
So it's it's all work in progress, so that's good. And then when we get it all collated, then we will vote on it as the changes to make sure we're all on the same page. And it has to go to council for approval when we get to that point. Steve, yours is good, or you've looked at yours? Okay, so we'll continue to with that put together, and then when we have it all into a document, then we'll review that. Next up on the list is public restrooms. Steve and Randy, did you have an opportunity to get out to the businesses, and what did you find?
I did. And I left town for two weeks.
And I was out of town, so.
So I spoke with sixteen business owners on Point Brown Avenue. Everyone was willing to take the the two question survey. And so what what I found of those sixteen business owners, every one of them has restrooms. Only the Red Sky Tattoo allows customers to use the restroom. So fifteen out of sixteen do not. That's ninety-four percent. I went out again yesterday, but I quit after finding so many locked doors. So many businesses were closed. I also went out on the weekend before I went town, left town. And I don't remember what that weekend was, but store owners were so busy. I I just turned around and went home. So I'm going to hit it again tomorrow. I want to hit every business on, you know, other than restaurants on Point Brown Avenue. I got a little bit of feedback. I would say about half of these respondents of the sixteen regularly send people who are looking for restrooms to the arcade. I don't know how they feel about that. There wasn't a lot of interest in this.
They weren't interested in putting those up?
No. One woman said, so you're you're basically asking me, if someone asks me to use a restroom, I'm going to send them fifteen minutes away.
Okay.
I said, well, that's all we got right now, and that's why we're doing this survey. And that's why we're looking at this, because we understand there's a dearth of restrooms, especially in that that core business district on Point Brown. So I was sort of surprised by the results, even though it's it's only sixteen so far, that all but one do not allow customers to use the restrooms.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm I'm surprised. I mean, I guess I get why you don't want to send your customers away. But hopefully, yeah, anyway, so they didn't, they weren't very responsive to the flyers.
No.
Okay, well, that's feedback.
Yeah.
Right. Anything else?
Yeah.
Super. Appreciate it. Okay, the next thing got on the item on the agenda is this ordinance of the city council, of the City of Ocean Shores, amending section eight point two zero of the municipal code to define who is the public safety officer. When we started looking at trapping, it it said that the Department of Fish and Wildlife contacts the public safety officer. And in April, I had sent a piece of correspondence to the chief of police asking who that is. And she responded saying, well, in the ten years I've been here, it's it's me. It's the chief of police. So, okay. And she went on to say that some things need, you know, council needs to change some parts of the ordinance to me to add this change. And so this is addition to definitions in Ocean Source Municipal Code eight point two zero. Public safety officer, the public safety officer referenced in this ordinance is determined to be the police chief or his or her designated representative. Any comments there?
I think that makes sense.
Since.
Since we didn't know before this all started, who that was.
Right.
Designated, but then having their designate, designate, whatever they call it.
Designated representative, and then that way whoever the chief of police wants to designate, yeah, fills that bill based on the definition that would then be in the municipal code. Any other thoughts? Do I have a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll send this forward for council approval and see how it goes, since that was one of the ones that came out of this discussion. It will, it will provide a definition in eight point two zero who that is.
Okay, so the chief of police has not yet designated a person to fill that role.
No, because right now there's, if she, she, at this point, she is the public safety officer. But it it says public safety officer, not chief of police. So we're going to formalize it as a chief of police or his or her representative, depending on who the chief of police is going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And I'm sure there's others that will will look at based on this ordinance that will will know we need to change or that will submit for change. This one just became an obvious one. And the police chief, obviously, in her correspondence in April, stated that she'd like to see it changed as well, so.
And and are there any obvious candidates?
Oh, that's a whole, yeah, there's they're in the process of hiring a new deputy police chief.
Yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, okay, so Community Development Liaison Report, Marshall was unable to be here today. Any member reports? Commission? No, I will be going to council tonight. The council tonight uh, for a discussion on the trapping as we discussed earlier. No other reports?
I have a question.
Sure.
When, as we're, I I realize it's not, we're not discussing this right now, but as we discuss the trapping situation and. And who's going to be this and who's going to be that. When does it, when does it go before like the city attorney? To see if it with reliability issues and stuff like that for the city?
So if it comes, so tonight is just a discussion.
I understand.
But if it gets to the point where we get recommendations back from council on how to amend. What we've put forth. Then once it goes to council, they can refer it to the city attorney.
Okay, so they would be the ones to make their call.
Yeah, we have said, for an example, the most recent thing we did was the sign code. And when we submitted that, they sent it immediately to legal.
Thank you.
For that, so that that's that's a step in the process.
Understood.
Okay. Anything else? Any public communication on the backside?
Yes, designated by the police chief. Will that be made public? How does the citizens know who is designated as public safety officer?
It's a very good point. What we learned is uh, when I asked that question. Um, the response was, well, I know who the emergency management. Person is and that's the deputy fire chief.
Right.
But the que- the answer was, I don't know who the public safety officer is. But chief of police, she answered that for us. So I'm I'm sure that will be, you know, public record.
Certain person's name of the public sense?
I would imagine, I would I would imagine it would be public record once designated, just like uh. Chief Mandela is for the emergency.
So I know to go to Chief Mandela for that topic.
Correct.
Then do I go to the police department for this time?
Right now, the chief of police.
Police.
He's right.
Right.
But in the future, you can't just designate somebody in that name who it is.
Well, and that's why this says the public safety officer referenced is determined to be the police chief. Okay. For his or her designated representative and the police chief may not designate someone else. So you'd go to the police chief in this case.
Right, at least there's somebody.
Button, yeah, you always want to have a button.
Right.
The chief can, you can reach out to. Any other comments?
No, you're good.
Okay. That's okay, you know, we're open to anything here. Okay, anything from afar? Vida, Jane, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Jane, anything else?
Uh, yeah, I just had one thing.
Okay.
Now that we've designated, because that has always been a question, the public safety officer, everybody's always like, who is it? Who is it? But anyways, um, something that happened recently is that um, uh, Fish and Wildlife. Uh, did set a trap out. I can't remember what it was for. Um, but the problem was was that not everybody was married or were that and I understand that's not. In your purview, but it would be nice if this does go forward and things get fixed. Um, and if uh, W D F W is in charge, though, that anywhere a trap is set. That a certain radius of um, neighbors are made aware of, um, because there was an incident where they. Were not and somebody stumbled across a trap that had been set. So just something to think about that might be something added in there. I don't know. I don't know the state. R C W on that so well. It might be covered in that, but having a radius if there is a trap put out. So that, you know, uh, neighbors in close vicinity are aware that there is a trap located on a property that's close to there, so children. Whatever pets are, don't wander in the gutter. And that's all I have. I hope you guys have a good afternoon.
Yeah, that's a very, that's a very good point, Jane. Um, in in working through this, all we were told. Is that um, of course, Department of Fish and Wildlife has their processes and I don't know the back end of their processes. But when it comes to putting a trap here in Ocean Shores. Uh, Scott did say he has to contact the public safety officer before that's done, so. I'm sure that was done, but your point of notification, that's an interesting one.
Uh, yes, and that was my point exactly because he did contact the public safety officer, but the information was not relayed out. Um, in my opinion, far enough to where it was. A certain individual. So it, you know, it would be nice if we could have that written in to um, the ordinance if council decides to go forward with it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next meeting will be on September twenty third, twenty twenty five, two P M in the Ocean Shores Library Meeting Room. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Time is two thirty five.